Okay, if everybody could be seated, please, so we can start. Okay, let's get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 19th, 2022, regular meeting of the RTM of Fairfield. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ed Bateson?
Here.
Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggiero?
Here.
Bill Gerber?
Here.
Karen McCormick? Cindy Perham? Jeff Steele? Alex Dorrell?
Here.
Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert? Sharon Pastilli? Is there an announcement in District Four?
Lo— What'd she say? Am I next? Laura Carson, because I'm here.
Thank you. We have an announcement for your district. Hold on.
Liz Esma, District Four. I wanted to introduce and welcome Michelle McCabe, our newest member, replacing Alice Kelly, who resigned in District Four.
Thank you, and welcome, Michelle.
Laura Carson? She's here. Michelle McCabe. Marcy Spolier. Liz Esma. Will Diaz. Josh Garskoff. Joe Seibert. Jay Walk. Steve Barretts. Hannah Gale. Andrew Goseffa. Lisa Havy. John Keun. Mark McDermott. Jill Vergara. Karen Wackerman. Hank Ferentz. Pamela Iacono. Christine Messina. I have Pete Tolman on my list, and he's gone. It's on the list. Christine Brown. Drew Giorgiades. Margaret Horton. Kelly Sinto.
Here.
Ken Astorita. Peter Britton. Frank Patisse. Story Tolman.
Here.
And the individual who replaced Peter Tolman, whose name I don't have on my list.
Jim Myers.
Thanks, Jim. Sorry about that.
Okay, let's all please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it's great to see everybody back in person, all you folks that are here tonight, and the rest of you still home on WebEx. And we have a actually pretty good public crowd tonight. Shocking. Okay, let's jump into the agenda. So item number two is to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on June 27th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Wokes, seconded by Representative Horton. Are there any comments on the meeting minutes? Any amendments need to be made? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Representative McCabe abstains. Okay, that motion carries. Item number three, to hear a report on approved capital projects. We will not be hearing that tonight. Item number four, to hear and consider and act upon the following: reappointment to the Ethics Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Nancy S. Billington, Republican, 25 Fleming Lane, term July 2022 to 2024. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Astorita. I'm going to open it up to the floor for any comments. Is Nancy on WebEx? Ms. Billington?
Good evening. I didn't quite hear how you introduced me. You would like me to speak a bit, or are there questions?
I'm asking the body if they have any questions currently. I just want to make sure you were here with us. Thank you.
I am. I am here.
Thank you. Representative Spolier.
Marcy Spolier, District Four. I'd like to make a motion today to postpone this item to a date certain of October 24th, 2022, which is our next RTM meeting. And that is in order to consider nominees for both vacancies.
Do I have a second? Representative Lambert. I'll open it up. Any questions from the body? Any comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll take the amendment. Can I read that? Well, we're going to have a motion to postpone this item to a date certain of October 24th, 2022, which is our next full RTM meeting, in order to consider nominees for both vacancies. Representative Vergara. You have to hold—you have to come up tonight and use this one mic we have. This is the only camera shot for WebEx, so—and make sure you hold down the push button to speak.
Jill Vergara for District Seven. I just wanted to clarify that the reason why I'm going to support this motion is that I believe that this appointment without filling the other vacancy violates our Charter, Section 3.2, the minority representation requirement that states that no more than a bare majority of the members of a permanent appointed board or commission shall be members of the same political party.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Anybody else from the body? Somebody on WebEx? Pro? RTM members, put RTM members, put a place in the chat if you want to ask a question to tonight, please. Representative Bateson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay. I think I caught the tail end of what Jill was saying. What's the problem here? Is Jim—do we have the town attorney on? It sounds like we're doing something we're not supposed to be doing.
Attorney Baldwin is present.
The Charter reference is accurate. Whether they could conduct any business or not without abiding by the Charter, language cited by Representative Vergara, is a good question, and I don't think that there's any harm to postponing to try to get a full body or full membership on the body.
Sorry, not one word of that came through to me.
Couldn't hear either.
You want to try again, Jim? Oh, you want me to paraphrase? Can you hear me? Mr. Bateson, Representative Bateson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, how's this? All right. So the Charter provision is as stated by Representative Vergara. Whether or not it would be violated by voting on this nomination or nominee tonight is a question, but certainly I don't think that they could conduct any business as constituted presently or even with—well, I should say with Ms. Billington on the commission. So I don't think there's any harm in postponing this, and since they couldn't conduct any business in any event. You got that? Ed?
I can't see the screen, Representative Bateson, so the thumbs up isn't working for me, so you're gonna—you're gonna have to speak.
I'm all good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you, sir. Representative Gale, did you have a comment? Thank you. Okay, so we'll take this to a vote, the postponement. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? I did. Representative—who was it? Lambert. Sorry, opposed was Representative Myers, Ferentz. Abstentions? There's none, so that motion carries. Thirty-five to zero. Oh, did we get the—got our online folks? We can't forget them. Okay, item number five is—it's a long one. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended. Motion to waive the reading. Do I have a second? Representative Pastilli. Okay. This is the Villa Avenue property. I will open it up to the body for questions. Representative Garskoff? I apologize. Thank you. That's why you're here. Otherwise, you know, you leave me to my own accord. It would be done in five minutes, but could I have a motion to approve? Representative Garskoff, seconded by Representative Seibert. Thank you. Representative Garskoff, now you can come up and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Josh Garskoff, District Five. I rise to support this and ask for your support of this. The Rooster River is buried underground in between concrete channels, and it can't handle any flood—any high flows at all, and it floods into people's yards and basements and cars and homes, and there's been a lot of damage. I think there was at least one death in recent times from a flood from the Rooster River. I support this. I do have a question—I don't know if there's somebody from the administration who can answer it, but there were originally, I believe, five items in the Myloun and McBroom conceptual design, and I think three of them are moving forward, and I wonder about the other two and what the status of the other two are. Can someone address that?
Mr. Hurley is present. We'll need your services, sir.
Yes. Hi, I'm Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager for Fairfield. Originally, the report had seven potential sites. The two main ones, most bang for the buck, as I mentioned at the subcommittees last week, were the Tunxess Hill and the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course. This one here is one of those other ones in between. There were two that had been eliminated, the one by the Brook Lawn Country Club and the one by Woodfield Village, were just deemed too much, and they were both on private property in terms of too much cost with little benefit. This one here, though, the report did mention that although there would only be no or slight detention, it would alleviate—and it could potentially eliminate some of the flooding on the Algonquin properties.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Just a follow-up. So there were seven. Two of them have been taken off the table. We have three that are moving forward. What about the other two? That's my question.
We're still in design on that. The two that I mentioned before were the ones that had the longest permit process and the most design and the most costly, but they also provided the most bang for the buck. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Garskoff and Mr. Hurley. Any other comments or questions from the Representative Lambert?
Tom Lambert, District Three. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council. I just had a question in between last meeting and this one as to the status of title insurance for the purchase, and Attorney Baldwin informed me that there'd be someone available to speak about that tonight. So I just wondered what the status of title insurance was, if we're going to be going forward with that, and if there are any concerns from our title search.
Thank you. I think Attorney Peter Ambrose. This was thrown your way, sir. Welcome back.
Good evening, Peter Ambrose. Glad to be back. I have—we are getting title insurance. Certainly, I've discussed this with Old Republic Title Insurance Company, so they're going to prepare a title insurance policy. We review the restrictive covenants of the association, and they do not prohibit the subdivision or prohibit the intended use for either part of the Rooster River program or for passive recreational purposes. We can't build on the site, but certainly the intent is to enhance the Rooster River.
That's all for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Lambert and Attorney Ambrose. Any other questions or comments from the body? Representative Vergara.
Jill Vergara for District Seven. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town attorney. I think that we had an email exchange about the ordinance for the real property management and the requirement that six Board of Finance members make a concurrence with a waiver. And you weren't sure what the purpose of it was, but I personally believe—and I wanted to state for the record—that if it exists in our ordinance right now, I think that we should do it. And if we don't think that it should exist in our ordinance, I'm more than happy to go through the process of revising it, but since it does exist, I'd like to go ahead and use that process.
Thank you. As I explained in the—or tried to explain in that email exchange, the question is, what exactly is the Board of Finance waiving? And I've struggled. I've reached back. I've reached out to people who served on the Board of Finance. I've reached out to other veteran political members of this community, both present and former, and nobody seems to have a good answer except for the suggestion that there is the purchasing policy, which is established by the Board of Finance, which requires bids to be received by the town, or for the town to somehow participate in that closed bidding process. And with this unique transaction, which is exclusively really between the town and the seller, it's not applicable. So the question remains, what is it that we're asking the Board of Finance to waive? And I guess if it's the sense of this body to ask them to waive something, not that anyone knows what it is, we'll do it, because it should be simple enough. But it is a legitimate question, and in this case, I don't think it's applicable. But I'll take my instructions from the body.
Do you have any follow-up, Representative Vergara?
Jill Vergara for District Seven. I think that since there was also some discrepancy about appraisals and how much we were purchasing this property for, there is some reason to have Board of Finance review and some kind of participation in the process. And I think that that was clear from reading the ordinance as well. To me, that's why they would be participating in this, and like you said, the purchasing policy. So as I said, I think that if you don't think this is necessary language any longer, we can go about the process of eliminating it, but it makes me uncomfortable not to follow this process.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Any other—excuse me. Any other comments or questions from the body? One minute. Pro, is there any—nobody on WebEx? Please put your name in the chat if you have a question or comment. In the meantime, we'll bring Representative Vergara back up.
Jill Vergara for District Seven. I wanted to make a motion to amend the resolution with the language that I had submitted in advance. It's exactly the same language, so those clauses, be it further resolved, that said purchase and donated real properties together, commonly known as 150 Villa Ave, are hereby designated for insert conservation and passive takeout and/or recreational. And then it would continue to say use, and to serve as a detention strike area ad area with environmental, water quality, and covert access benefits to the town and neighborhood. And another paragraph, be it further resolved that, subject to RTM approval, the first select woman is authorized to pursue an agreement with the Aspatuck Land Trust to collaborate on the strike future development and maintenance of such real property dedicated to add conservation and passive recreational purposes.
Did— Do I have a second, Representative Garskoff? Thank you. Did everybody get that, or do you want me to read it again, or is everybody okay with the language changes? Anybody on WebEx? Okay, all—the—we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the— There was—Representative Garskoff seconded it. I ask for comment. Sure.
Button. Okay. I appreciate the representative's recommendations, and I take no issue with any of it, other than the deletion of future development, because the property itself is clearly not going to be developed in the classic sense. However, the Aspatuck Land Trust, in our discussions, and Mr. David Brant, the Director of the Aspatuck Land Trust, I believe, is on tonight, those discussions—oh, he's here. Great. Hi, David. Those discussions include Aspatuck's creation or possible creation of a natural playground or a natural area, new plantings. So that would encompass the concept of developing those plans. And I just don't want to mislead this body into thinking that they're not going to participate, or the intention is not to have them participate in that manner. As a matter of fact, that's one of the main reasons why they've been brought in and why they're interested in this property. So I would suggest that you keep that portion, and the rest of the amendment, in my view, perfectly fine. But those are the reasons.
What are you pointing at? Representative Giorgiades.
Drew Giorgiades, District Nine. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town attorney. The word "development," I'm a little confused. So is the Aspatuck Land Trust paying for this? This is coming out of ARPA funding, so I'd like to know their contribution to the purchase, their contribution beyond any future development. So if we delete the word "development," then they won't come in later with more funds to create a playground? Is that—so that's what I'm understanding. I'm also concerned, because obviously, in any kind of environmental location where you want maximum—we just want it to be conservation land. Any kind of development may inhibit the land's ability to absorb water and be, you know, as much of a help to the neighbors who are hoping for some kind of aid for the Rooster River. Thank you.
The use of the word "development" needs to be taken in its context. The original language said that the first select woman is authorized to pursue an agreement with the Aspatuck Land Trust to collaborate on the future development and maintenance of such real property dedicated to conservation and passive recreational purposes. So that's the context of the use of the word "development." It's not in the classic, let's say, 830G context or subdivision context, to the contrary. And Mr. Brant is here, if you want to hear a little bit about what they've come up with in terms of different ideas, although obviously nothing is written in stone and nothing's been agreed upon.
Where is Mr. Brant? Would you be amenable to giving us a quick overview? Thank you.
I gotta keep my finger on it the whole time? I don't know if I can do that. Oh, jeez. I'm gonna put my pen down. So I'm David Brant, Executive Director of Aspatuck Land Trust. I've been with the Land Trust as Executive Director for 14 years. So this particular property, to try to answer your question, is—you know, has a very small upland footprint that doesn't flood. So the area that we could develop is relatively small, but, you know, I think it could be a useful gathering spot, for example, for parents with kids and strollers, you know, a small, little natural playground, nothing robust with concrete footings or anything like that, in a very small area. And then the other, the other ideas, you know, as Jim mentioned, are really cleaning it up. I live in the Stratfield neighborhood on Toysom Hill Road. I drive by this all the time. It's a real eyesore. It looks pretty bad. So getting rid of that chain-linked fence, which is terrible, you know, removing, you know, invasives, removing dead trees in the town right-of-way, planting native shrubs and other native plants, which would actually enhance the ability of the property to absorb, you know, flooding and excess water, so things like that, to make it a little more user-friendly for the neighborhood.
Is there another word besides development that we're, uh, I try what I was thinking?
Well, I would, I would just, you know, refer to, you know, Attorney Baldwin's putting the development in context. So we would develop the site, you know, in these ways, you know, that are more natural, you know, to the space. I don't know if there's another useful word for development.
Stewardship.
Stewardship, certainly, but enhancement. I would defer to Attorney Baldwin on that one.
Representative Georgiades, did you have something else?
Thank you very much for the clarification. As an avid gardener, doesn't sound like development to me, but it does sound like enhancement or, ma'am, what was the word you were using? Stewardship. I like those words. Thank you for your time.
I've been persuaded, I understand why future development would need to remain in this resolution, and if possible, I'd like to revise my suggested amendment to keep those words in, but to change, sorry. Oh, should I do that? Okay. So I'll withdraw my original amendment and propose a new amendment where, do I have to go through the whole thing where, with the first resolution as well? So the amendment would read, be it further resolved that said purchased and donated real properties together, commonly known as 150 Villa Ave, are hereby designated for add conservation and passive takeout and/or recreational use, and to serve as a detention area with environmental, water quality, and covert access benefits to the town and neighborhood. And be it further resolved that, subject to RTM approval, the first select woman is authorized to pursue an agreement with the Aspatuck Land Trust to collaborate on the future development and maintenance of such real property, strike dedicated, add restricted to add conservation and passive recreational purposes.
Okay, do I have a second? Again, Representative Garskoff. Okay. Any other questions about that amendment from Representative Vergara? Representative Steele?
Representative Steele, District 7, I'd like to ask the town attorney.
I can see you, so I guess, yes. Thank you. Town Attorney gives the change in language a thumbs up, and so we'll, right now, we're not gonna vote, we're gonna have public comment, so anybody in the public that wants to comment on this item, come up.
Amendment.
Well, on the amendment, we'll take a vote. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Was that, was that in favor or opposed? Whoever said aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion, the amended motion carries. Representative Garskoff.
Josh Garskoff, District 5. I have a question, kind of tracking on what we were just talking about, because my understanding from Mr. Hurley's comments at previous meetings was that the dry, the upland is where we were gonna kind of gain some water reservoir, we were gonna be able to hold water by using the dry land, because it's already wetland where it's wet, so how do you hold water there? So I'm a little, I have a question, if the, if the upland is gonna be used for holding water or for creating a gathering area, or maybe it can be both, but I'm just not sure. And I guess maybe that's for Mr. Hurley, I'm not sure.
It's possible, it's both. I guess the best example I could use is near Hartford, you know how they have that flood control, but it's also a park. So in this case, we'd have to work with Aspatuck to make sure that what they're proposing doesn't harm any of the detention or different level ponds that we were envisioning with some of the environmental improvements as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. So you, you feel like there is a, there is a potential way to have both? That seems possible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Garskoff. Mr. Hurley, any other questions or comments from the body? Nobody on WebEx? We're gonna go to the public that's here first, okay? So I'll open up the public, give you two minutes each, whoever wants to speak, come on up, state your name, address.
My name is Amy Barno, District 11 or something, no, kidding, there's a little Hunger Games for me. My first RTM meeting, and I just want to start by saying thank you for being RTM members. I'm sure there's a lot of thankless nights here, and I should probably come a lot more often, because there's a lot of good work going on, so, yeah, two minutes. All right. So, a year ago, I live, together with my husband, Tom, actually, two of our three kids are here as well, and we live at 131 Algonquin, which, if we had a map up, you would see our backyard, a butts to the small section, a little of high land there on the 150 Villa property. A year ago, on September 6th, we experienced a just extraordinary flood event, and in fact, what started as essentially a lake in our front yard at 10:30 at night moved to an extraordinary lake, like I could have gone waterskiing in my backyard a short time later. We have pictures, if anybody is interested in seeing. So at midnight, there was a little trickle of water coming in through a crack in our foundation, and in less than an hour, we had almost four feet of water in our basement. I have, I would not believe it if I wasn't here, and most of the crowd over there, raise your hand if you're from the Brooklawn Park Association, many of them have experienced the same level of flooding. We lost everything, $40,000 worth of hot water heater and furnace, the fridges, the furniture, everything in the garage, the, what's the lawnmower, the thing when you have power, the generator, and a car. Our neighbors lost a car. We lost, I mean, it just was extraordinary, and we were not the only ones, many of our neighbors here and all over the surrounding houses. This is a real problem, and we are on the Algonquin side, there is similar catastrophic flooding on the Villa side. So the flooding, when we talk about Rooster River, like this is real lives. We lost so much, I can't even tell you, all of like boxes of like homemade things, all the pictures, everything. And, you know, we won't get any of that back. So we know that the reality is that purchasing 150 Villa is a piece of the puzzle. I don't think it's a magic elixir that I expect to fix everything, but I think the town has not just this incredible opportunity, but a responsibility to do something, to help people in this town with this catastrophic flooding. We are here to express our support and our urgent support that this gets voted on tonight. We have an incredible, you know, confluence of like state funding, plus willing seller, plus an extraordinary amount of due diligence that the town, the Aspatuck Land Trust, and a lot of people, Bill Hurley, have put into this. So we urge you, please vote in favor of this tonight, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Since there were two of you, I allowed for four minutes, so, two times, too. Any other comments from the public in attendance?
Well, I hate to be like this, but I'm running the meeting, and you raise your hand, so you're coming up.
Right there? Hi, everybody, my name is Doug Brown. I live at 101 Park Drive. I also am the, I'm the chairman of the Board of Managers of Brooklawn Park Association. I sent all of you late last night. I tend to be a night owl, a letter urging you all to approve this, hoping very much for bipartisan support. It seems like a real win-win for everybody. I also came tonight in case there were any questions after the public, time for the public contribution. But as Amy said, we certainly, we have a number of neighbors here, certainly, we've had a problem on Algonquin Road for a long time. I'd like to stress that it's not just Algonquin Road, it is on the other side, Villa, Lynbrook. A lot of the streets in there have also suffered by the Rooster River flooding. This seems like it's a great opportunity, and I think a lot of hard work has been done by people on, everybody involved in town government with respect to this property. It's nice that it came up for purchase. It seems like, I don't see a downside to it. Obviously, I'm speaking for the neighborhood and personally as well, but I am aware of some things that were raised as questions, and I don't understand why, in this case, the town's purchase of the property would alleviate flooding problems and also provide open space. And those are two big things that are beneficial to the neighborhood and our area of town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from anybody here, from the public? All right, we'll go to the WebEx and, Kathleen Griffin has a comment.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, this is Kathleen Griffin. I live at 15 Stony Brook Road. I'm also a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals, I've served there for about seven years. So I'm just requesting that you postpone a vote on this item for a month, so that you can do a little bit more due diligence on this purchase. It's a complicated property, and some of the questions that I've sent to the Town Attorney, I don't feel like I've had answers on, and a couple of comments I want to make, that I think that the use of ARPA funds for this acquisition is not appropriate, given the intended use as open space and the very limited impact it will have on Rooster River flooding. The negotiated price was relied on the amount from the assessor, no appraisal was done, and is this price really a fair market value for less than 50% of the total parcel and for the wet portion? Is there not a less expensive or more appropriate solution to resolve this flooding on Algonquin? And that these drainage issues on Algonquin Road may very well be the responsibility of the association and the special taxing district in which the property resides. So I think that that needs to be explored and answered before we agree to purchase the property. Additionally, Malone and McBroom report states that the work proposed on the flat property could make the flooding worse for the houses on Villa Avenue, and I think that that's something you really need to take into consideration when you purchase, when we're purchasing this property, and that it cannot be used for detention, is what I read in the report. So, ARPA funding for the Rooster is relatively limited, and I ask that you reserve the $400,000 for projects that will have a direct and definite impact on Rooster River flooding. This appears to be an open space acquisition largely and not a flood mitigation project. My opinion, it should be thoughtfully considered and appropriated funds as such. And I just do want to add that I would hope that you would check with the Board of Finance as well on this purchase, to make sure that it's meeting all the appropriate regulations, et cetera, for the purchase. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Anybody else, Pro, in there? Nope. Anybody else want to comment in the, you spoke already? Somebody else from the public who hasn't spoken? Just got the guy that was holding pictures.
Tom Barno, I'm the less articulate husband of the woman that just spoke earlier. I think the key point is, and I don't have every detail, but the key point is, the owner of the property, you know, he's honestly been extremely gracious in his efforts and in helping the neighborhood, right? He obviously has the right to sell the land to anybody he chooses, and honestly, he had a lot of bids from developers that were very interested in obtaining the land, and certainly then putting buildings in, right? Putting in structures that we understand, and certainly, Mr. Hurley could provide better context, but that would definitely, if that happened, that would make flooding worse for the area, if buildings were put up there. And that's obviously what a developer would do. So the fact that he's willing to work with the town and the Aspatuck Land Trust to have this remain largely, you know, unchanged, and maybe just modest modifications, as we talked about earlier, I think is the important factor and something that everybody should Thank you.
Carolyn Tribuco.
Nice to see you, Carolyn Tribuco. I have the pleasure of living in Brooklawn Park. We moved there about five years ago. And while I have never seen such flooding in my life, as many of our neighbors have suffered, I would like to comment, if I could, and address Kathleen's question about the Brooklawn Park Association and the special taxing district that it is. While that taxing district goes back to the 1920s, it doesn't behave as a special taxing district today. My understanding and the way that I've interacted with the association is they collect, we submit dues, and we in turn have our trash picked up. That's about the sum of it. That's about the sum of it. We might occasionally do some mowing of the lawn, but it is not, it's not an association that assesses funds, has, has special assessments, or in any way has the capability to be able to purchase a lot and summon the funds like we're talking about here. So while I understand, it sounds very fancy, I can tell you that it behaves in a very modest way. And I do hope that you will vote for this.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else before we move ahead? Okay, any comments from the body? Oh, we already closed public comment, I'm sorry, sir. Representative Steele.
In the old days, I didn't have to do that. Jeff Steele, District 2. I, I'm just going to, a simple comment that I think this is, is an important thing to do. We're finally tackling an issue in town that, that has needed to be dealt with. We hear from residents, and this is, this is awful, just even seeing the pictures and hearing the stories. So credit to, to the first select woman in putting this forward, and I think this is a, this is a great thing, an important thing we need to do, and I think, I, I don't see any reason not to do it. We're addressing a problem.
Thank you, Representative Steele.
Good evening. Karen McCormick, District 2. Just want to make one comment, and that is, want to really send out congratulations to the residents of this area in terms of hopefully this vote will go through tonight. And I also want to commend the first select woman on making this particular issue regarding the Rooster River flood mitigation a priority. It's the first time in 20 years that the town has actually made efforts to move forward and spend money on this, and I think we need to really acknowledge the fact that the first select woman has made efforts to make this happen. I'd also like to ask if Mr. Hurley is still here?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Can you address the concerns of Ms. Griffin with respect to, are there less expensive means that can be utilized to resolve the flooding on Algonquin Road? And also, is, you know, the issue, if there's anything else that can be done to resolve these flooding issues in an expedient manner in lieu of this plan?
Again, Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager. One of the things to keep in mind is when the, this, the Brooklawn Association was once private, and once it became public, the town's responsibility of the storm lines on Algonquin and the two lines that pass through the, the property that's before you today become town and become public. So we have that responsibility. One of, we have a legal obligation to maintain and perhaps a moral obligation for the flood mitigation. If this property was to remain in private hands, everything that we do, we would have to kind of ask for permission because it would only be through an easement, enlarging pipe sizes, or date, what we call daylighting the pipe, shortening up the pipe, or making a ditch, or excavating some of the uplands, as was mentioned before, or providing a small berm. That would affect a property owner and a private property owner. So if the town were to purchase that, we don't have to ask for permission for any of those things. The other things that are also involved is there's a culvert underneath Villa Avenue. And again, right now, the way that the property is fenced in, every time we want to go out and clean it, we have to obtain a key, not from the owner, but from the landscaper because that, you know, the owner may not be present. And, you know, if we have to wait a day or two, sometimes that could be inconvenient if there's some major blockage in that culvert. That's another thing that we would be able to resolve. Kathleen Griffin is correct in that you have to do a delicate balance. If we were to just purchase the property and enlarge the pipe sizes or hold back the detention without a proper design, there could be impacts downstream. And so we have to balance where we have to detain a small portion of that area, make it lower so that the water can go through the pipes and help the people at Algonquin without, you know, having effects down on Villa Avenue. So on that aspect, at least it warrants at least a question and a good thought. But we have already, you know, addressed that, and we will continue to address that with our consultant. So that's basically, it gives us more power to do whatever is proposed in terms of, as I was mentioning before, we were looking at different stages where, you know, you may have an area where we excavate a foot or two. You can't do much more than that because of the high groundwater table. But providing berms, stream buffers, disconnecting the pipes, things like that, we'll have a lot more ability to do that if the property is town-owned and not private. Trying to think of anything else. I, I was able to, I hopefully was able to address the comments and questions that she had earlier, and I, I'm definitely willing to talk to her afterwards or offline if she has any further questions about the project. The last thing I had it read here is, I'll just paraphrase, where, again, when they said that it was not an ideal detention pond site, again, they're looking at comparing it to the other seven that we had looked at in the study. But design of relocated outlets, daylighting the channels flowing through the subject parcel may alleviate most or all of the flooding being reported on Algonquin Road. And so, you know, that's the thing to keep in mind. If the analysis of backwater flow through the drainage system, there could be an outlet control check valve or something like that to prevent the water from, from backing up. They would look at that as well. So our consultant is aware of that, and after these two main projects, this obviously will be the next one on their, on their list.
Thank you, Representative McCormick and Mr. Hurley. I saw another hand up.
Drew Georgiades, District 9. First, I'd like to say I support the purchasing of open space always. We live in a very congested part of the country, and any opportunity to buy open space, I 100% support. I also wanted to reach out to the members here, the, of the community. I live in the beach area. I live in District 9. I have experienced the same kind of flooding, perhaps worse, where you lose the contents of your basement, your car, you lose your entire home. So following on Representative McCormick's comment to thank people, I'd like to thank our current president, the administration, and the entire Congress for the ARPA funding that's making this purchase possible. And I'm very heartened to hear that the first select person, first select woman, Brenda Kupchak, is committed to helping all neighborhoods that suffer from flooding and just, you know, things that climate change is impacting and all of us are worried about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Georgiades. Any other comments from the body? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. So we are voting on the motion that we approved as amended. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Abstentions? I think that was unanimous. Okay, that passes unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. You guys are welcome to stay the rest of the time. I mean, this is going to clear the room, I think.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You think I don't know what I'm doing, standing here all the time, but sometimes you forget to press and hold. Item number six, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, whereas the Board of Selectpersons approve. Thank you. Who have a second? Representative Chris Seppa? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this item? RSM woke, seconded by Representative Bastilli. It's open for conversation and questions to the body.
Jill Vergara for District 7. I wanted to note again that this item is only before us tonight because we investigated the law, State Statute 9-369 BA, saw that we are the body vested with the power to authorize the town clerk to write this explanatory text, and we had to specifically request to add this to our agenda. The Board of Selectmen mistakenly voted on this authorization. We had paid two attorneys working on this matter, and up to that point had already charged $140,000 for this issue, for charter review. By the end of the month, it's likely that legal fees will probably exceed $200,000, and this doesn't include the clerical services. This is, this probably amounted to being the most expensive charter revision in our history and the fastest. Yet there were so many procedural mistakes, to the point of disempowering this body, including vesting power in the wrong board, as well as the Board of Selectmen never voting on the timeline, which is specifically required by State Statute and was promised by the Board of Selectmen itself in one of its own resolutions to occur, but never did. This mistake is yet another example of how Attorney Mednick was clearly not familiar with our form of government. I stated the other night that I was not only displeased that the RTM's power to make this authorization was given to the Board of Selectmen, but was also displeased that the RTM could not now effectuate our statutory power under 9-369 BC, the same statute that I quoted before, and which appeared in a resolution to the Board of Selectmen, so all of our attorneys knew about it, to prepare summaries of arguments in favor and opposed to the proposed charter revisions. Had the timeline not been artificially compressed, the RTM would have been able to pass an ordinance, form a committee, and approve pros and cons in summaries. These summaries could have better educated the people and prepared the entire public to vote. State statute gives towns a full 15 months after approving, the approving authority approves or rejects the charter revisions to put these revisions on a ballot. We didn't take that time. The Board of Selectmen voted on the charter revisions on August 11th, and so our town could have put this easily on the 2023 municipal ballot where it naturally belonged. These are municipal issues. It should be on a municipal election, which is 2023. This year, 2022, we already have a state issue on the ballot that we have to vote on. Everybody's knocking doors, talking about state issues because we're talking about state candidates. It's naturally, we're talking about state issues. Makes no sense to put a municipal ballot issue on this ballot this year. I also wanted to note that Attorney Mednick preordained the timeline in his June 2021 retainer letter, setting 2022 as the year to put it on the ballot, even before the Board of Selectmen had formed the committee or had any discussions about any of these issues. He had already said that this would be on the 2022 ballot. That seems very odd to me.
Any other comments from the body?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
It's been a long time. Nice to see everyone. I just, Bill Gerber, District 2, 25 Shady Hill. I just want to emphasize how important this explanatory text is going to be, should we approve it, tonight. I just think everyone needs to be aware, it's not going to be an easy task. This is a very long and complicated question that's being asked on the ballot compared to what we normally see in, in other towns. I'm a little weird this way, but I went through every single question related to charters on every single ballot. There were 62 of them since 2016, and I just want to make, make sure everyone knows, it's pretty rare to have a question of this size on the ballot with these types of, you know, with so many things packed within it, like we have. You know, there's, sometimes there's an easy question, like should we change the schedule for the budget? Or should we, and sometimes there's very difficult questions, but they're yes or no. Should we switch, you know, from a RTM to a town council? But for the types of, out of 62, I think only maybe five were of the types of questions that we're asking adding people, adding positions in the charter and other things, where they're combined into one long question. So it's going to be very, very important that the explanatory text breaks this out, you know, in an unbiased way, in a way that people understand. And I appreciate that our town clerk will work diligently on this. And I hope, you know, I hope we get a chance to review, but I believe we don't get a chance to comment if Attorney Baldwin can answer that.
To respond to your, your last question directed to me, yes, that's correct. You are here to authorize the explanatory text, whether or not it's created, but not
Thank you, Representative Gerber and Attorney, Town Attorney Baldwin. Any other comments from the body? Okay, nobody else? So Representative Vergara?
Jill Vergara for District 7. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of having the explanatory text be neutral, that that's required by the statute, and say, I'm sorry, Betsy, I know this is going to be a really hard job for you because the question itself is not neutral, so I think it's going to be very hard for you.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Prue, any RTM members? Okay, any other here on the floor right now? Attorney Baldwin, you have a comment?
As I said last week at the committee meetings, I don't want there to be any misconception that should the town clerk request assistance, legal assistance from myself, that it is perfectly okay for her to do so. So I just don't want this body to be misled, thinking that Betsy, our town clerk, is going to go home and start writing this very involved document. That's all I want to say. I just want to bring that to your attention so there's no misconception about that. And that is certainly at the prerogative of the town clerk.
Representative Bastilli?
Sharon Bastilli, District 3. I just wanted to make a comment on the process, that if it's so involved to have to write the text to explain the question, then we are not setting this up in a way that makes it easy for our citizens to participate in our democracy. The fact that we have to hire the town attorney to phrase the explanation of the question is just telling of how this entire process has gone.
Shouldn't you left your mask on, now I gotta talk into the mic? Thank you, Representative Bastilli. Okay, anybody else in the body? Representative Vergara?
Jill Vergara for District 7. I have some amendments to propose. So there's a whereas clause, whereas the Board of Select persons in accordance with CGS Section 7-191E, I believe it's the first one. 7-191E and F, strike hereby. Strike, adopts, add, adopted. The following question to be placed on the ballot for a referendum. The next suggested amendment is, whereas the general statutes provide for an explanatory text, strike and, add a concise explanatory text to explain to the voters of the town the contents of the proposed revised charter. This is the last suggested amendment. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to CGS Section 9-369 BA, the representative town meeting authorizes the clerk, strike with the assistance of charter counsel, to prepare, add, strike and, add a neutral and concise explanatory text specifying the intent and purpose of the proposed charter revisions that are the subject of the ballot question that will be voted upon on November 8th, 2020. Oh, it says 2023. Oh, was it 2023 or 2022 in the resolution? Darn it.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Almost pulled the fast one there. Okay, do I have a second? Representative Whackerman, thank you. Any comments on the proposed amended language? Representative McCormick?
Karen McCormick, District 2. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town attorney. Does striking the language charter counsel permit the town clerk to still consult with you to formulate the explanatory language? The answer is no, that it does not. Thank you.
That's why I got up earlier. I just don't want there to be any misconception that should the assistance of town counsel, and in town council's opinion, should other legal assistance be needed, then it's perfectly appropriate, notwithstanding the proposed amendment, which I have no problem with in terms of the language which has been proposed. But I just don't want there to be any misconception.
Okay, any other comments from the body? Representative Spolier?
Hi, Representative Spolier, District 4. I was just wondering then, is there anything that would stop our town clerk? Does it have to be legal counsel that she consults with? Or could it be anyone else within the town? Perhaps the first select woman, perhaps the people on the charter revision committee, or perhaps members of this RTM? Is there anything that precludes that from occurring?
This proposed town charter revision, or the proposed revisions, are the most substantial changes, I think, in the last 50 or more years. I've actually researched, I've read all the old charter provisions, and actually I can correct myself and say that it is the most involved and extensive charter revision. The last significant change, I believe, was in the 70s. And to answer your question, the town clerk should utilize all resources in order to come up with those neutral explanations as to the considerable changes that are contained within this document. And that would and could include not just myself or charter counsel. It could include members of the public who are very involved, or it could include members of the Charter Revision Commission, anyone who has intimate knowledge as to the changes that are in there. For example, the Library Board of Trustees had specific requests that were presented to the Charter Revision Commission, and they would be naturally a resource for an explanation, or concise explanation as to what those changes represent and perhaps why. And the same can be said about other provisions in the charter.
Thank you, I have another follow-up question regarding that. So my follow-up question is, as members of the RTM, we represent our constituents. I know you guys are legal, but you know, this is to explain it to the basic voter, to our citizen, all of those that don't understand the legalese of what is going on. And so if we have representatives, or we have voters or constituents that have questions that might clarify some wording, are we within our right as members of the RTM to bring those to the town clerk?
I think you always have the right to bring ideas to the town clerk, but I think it's incumbent upon the town clerk to to look for guidance in those areas where she believes she needs guidance, and to suggest that there would be a committee or a bunch of emails that would be going to the town clerk to help her write this. I guess you can't be stopped from doing that. But in terms of being obligated to follow those directions or to collaborate with those people, whoever they may be, who are making such suggestions, that's up to her, of course.
So as an RTM body, we could form a committee at this time for suggestions of how to write this to the town clerk?
Yes, with no binding effect whatsoever, you could do whatever you want. But it has no binding effect, and is certainly not something that would be subject to to her having to listen to it, or to follow it, or to in any way actively interact with any such committee. So, but it's a free country, it's a free town. You can do whatever you want and make suggestions if you care to. It's quite a task.
Thank you, and just for clarification, when does this have to be finalized?
It must be complete, or completed in time for the absentee ballots for when they go out, and the town clerk can answer that question better than I can. October 7th, 31 days before the election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Spolier and Attorney Baldwin. Okay, anybody else from the body? Too late. Okay, so we have a second on the amended motion, so we can take that to a vote. I'll get to you. Thank you. So we'll take that to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Representative Ferentz? Representative Astorita? Abstentions? That motion carries 35/2. Thank you. I'm going to take this to the public now, we have amendment to the language of the original motion. Yes. Not, no. Did any of you want to comment? Okay, come on up, introduce yourself. Name, address, thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Lauren O'Brien, I'm a former RTM member. I see a lot of new faces, which is good, means our community's involved. I see some old friends in faces, so that's good too. Thanks for doing what often can be a thankless job. It's super important, I did it, very thankless at times, but very worthwhile. The RTM is a wonderful body, it helps build community in our town. I've met a lot of people through my work. There's people here tonight, former RTM members, current RTM members, and that's great to see. I'm here to ask you tonight to do what you were elected to do, by me, us, the constituents, and that is provide the legislative oversight to give the best possible representation to your constituents. After following the charter revision over the past year and reflecting upon the entire process and recommendations, I can sum it up with my word of the day, and that's obfuscate. Obfuscate. If the question that will be put to the voters requires a map, a compass, a satellite phone, and an attorney on speed dial, I think that's a fundamental process, a problem. Okay. Jeez, I've never said I'm not loud enough. I have a multitude of concerns. As has been stated, the unnecessarily compressed timeline is very concerning. The CRC stated that they did not look at everything because they ran out of time. That's concerning, we're talking about big changes to the town. So I've asked all along, why the rush? I've been to several meetings, I've written several letters expressing that each time. There is no rush to make the next election, period. As you all know, it's important to know your audience. The CRC seems to feel comfortable enough to recommend that an explanation is necessary of this one long, thickly worded question. The changes would, or the explanation would be done by the lovely, smart, and talented Betsy Brown, who I know is more than capable. The necessity, however, to do so begs the question, why not just present things sequentially, logistically, and clearly? This town is comprised of an eclectic and diverse set of citizens. They're smart. They can think for themselves. One thing that I've heard often during this process is, they wouldn't understand. Well, make the information clear, present it logically, and they will understand. They're intelligent. You know, this information is thick and it's content-rich, so why mash it up into one long question? It just doesn't make any sense. You know, the prevailing accepted practice is to write to an eighth grade level. Newspapers, magazines, the average person reads to an eighth grade level. It's sad for all of us who went to college, but that's what they say. So why are we using words like codify? Why don't we say reduce? Why is it not clearer, the language? If it's been acknowledged that people are going to have difficulty understanding it, why are we using cumbersome language to explain what these changes are? It doesn't make sense. It's contradictory to the whole end goal of having everyone understand and vote on what they want. Okay, I'll wrap it up. Couple questions. One of the reasons why I'm asking you to express to the Board of Selectmen that this needs more time and that it not be moved forward is because of the following. Why are we adding positions that were not formally on the charter outside of the budgeting process? How are we funding or adjusting finances to make these positions a reality? If we cut job prerequisites and requirements, like say the DPW director is no longer a licensed engineer, how are we adjusting the compensation? If we're lowering the expectations of the job, how are we, you know, there's an area where we could make a difference, but we didn't have time because we had to move the process forward. I ask you to think long and hard, and I ask you to exercise your legislative prowess and ability and do the right thing. Let's change the charter, time's moving forward, but let's give it the time it deserves, and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Next?
Thank you. Hello. Hello, it's nice to see some familiar faces and new ones, lots of new ones. Ellen Jacob, I'm a former RTM member, and Cedar Road is where I live. I agree, and was so happy to hear the comments tonight from the body. This is so important. This is so important and it needs a lot of work. I'm glad I'm not Betsy, but I just wanted to point out one area that it really troubles me that, as an example of what is not clear by the ballot wording, I'm really troubled by changes regarding our constables, particularly in combination with the new charter sections about standards of conduct, rules of civility, and cooperation among boards, which themselves seem vaguely worded enough to be open to interpretation. The ballot language regarding constables merely lists the revision as, quote, "appointment of constables." It sounds like a new invention, like electricity or some such. This item was a matter of considerable public concern during the charter reform hearings and for good reason. In truth, it would reduce the number of constables from seven to four and, more importantly, convert them from elected officials to appointed officials to be chosen by the Board of Select persons for four years. So why is that so important? According to the Connecticut General Assembly Office of Legislative Research, appointed constables have law enforcement authority, policing powers, which elected constables do not, including, among other things, and I quote, "preventing disorders at elections, prohibiting certain activities at elections, assisting judges in campaign finance violation inquiries, taking custody of delinquent children, and taking custody of a military court witness who refuses to appear." So newly-appointed constables with expanded law enforcement powers added to new rules of conduct for governing boards. Okay? Okay, it's dangerous. Well, the need... No, no, but just the need for the clarity in things that are hidden that are very important. Thank you.
Anyone else that's in attendance for the public? Nope. Okay. We'll go to WebEx. I think Catherine Braun, you're up.
Hi, I just wanted to try to answer one question that came up earlier before I give my comments. 9-369B, parentheses, B, says, "Each such explanatory text shall be prepared by the municipal clerk and shall specify," and this, of course, is once it's approved by the RTM, "the intent and purpose of each such proposal or question. Such explanatory texts shall not advocate either the approval or disapproval of the proposal or question." At the end of that section, B, it says, "Each such explanatory text shall be subject to the approval of the municipal attorney." Okay, so my comments are basically three sort of broad categories. There was a deficient process that led to a deficient product. Voter choice is being denied in terms of not having issues they can vote on separately. It's all one big question. And also, as a matter of form, when you pose changes, you should indicate the change to and from the charter, not to and from something that's going on in town right now. And when I go through my details, you'll understand that better. And, okay, so the RTM is not required to authorize the town clerk to do that. I realize that it appears very responsible to do so, but I'm not sure this question, which is 110 words long, can be fixed with an explanation. I don't know what level or depth the town clerk is supposed to go to to come through the entire charter to tell us exactly what the changes are from and to. I believe it's probably best for the RTM. And I wrote a letter, which was signed by 10 people, which you have by now, I hope. Perhaps it should be redrawn and put on the 2023 municipal election, which is probably where it belongs anyway. The whole process was compressed. It could have lasted about three years. Instead, it's lasting about one year, and that led to the problems we have right now. The all or nothing resulted in a convoluted, vague, and, I believe, misleading question. So some of the issues specifically that I have are, the very beginning of the long 110-word question has what I do not even consider a question. It's really kind of like an opinion, almost advocating language, which is frowned on, which certainly is against the public policy of the statute, where it says it'll make it easier to use and understand. It didn't have to say that, and it says that. I don't know how you fix that with an explanation. The next issue I have is codifying the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts. That does not explain to anyone what the real change is. The real change is the RTM now is allowed to have 55 representatives, and this will restrict it to 40 representatives without any ability of the RTM, which is our legislative branch of government, to manage its own size up to 56. That's a significant change and basically stripping the RTM of some of its power and authority right now, really for no reason. There was no justification given. It kind of was a result of compromise, things being put out there because there wasn't time to fully vet out other changes that were desired for the RTM by some of the CRC members, Charter Revision Commission members. The next issue is the constables. This was a controversial and substantive change. And just to back up a second, the Charter Revision Council said several times during the whole process, if it's controversial or if it's substantive, it should have its own question. And statistically, you know, if you look, well, somebody looked at like 60 towns in the last five years, and the average number of questions was 4.5. We have one. It makes no sense. But this is one with the constables that should have its own separate questions.
Ms. Braun, I'm going to give you, Ms. Braun, I'm sorry. I'm going to give you one more minute here.
Can I just finish up with two more points?
One more minute.
Codifying the town administrator and chief of staff, again, it doesn't specify you're changing the charter. Okay, these positions never existed, and it will permanently change our budget and our governance with two positions that were never in the charter before. And then reducing the qualifications for some of the department heads completely hidden or omitted is the fact that the Department of Public Works Director would no longer need to have the credentials that it requires now. So these are changes that are either hidden or opaque or unable, really, I think, to be even explained in an explanation. So that's my suggestion. Put the whole thing off, do it on 2023, which is the municipal election. And take a look at my letter explains this in a little more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Yes, we received your email around 5:00 PM this evening. Thank you. Prue, no other public comment on the WebEx, right?
I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I don't know who you are.
Alyssa Israel, 679 Roland Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was one of the 10 people who signed the letter that Catherine, Attorney Braun, just mentioned. Just to be brief, I agree with everything Attorney Braun just said and everyone else who spoke. I was shocked to learn that this process has cost us $200,000. And at the end of this, we do not even have a PDF searchable charter that's redlined with the edits so that everyone can see what has been changed. If that exists, please let me know, but I've asked three times for the charter to be PDF searchable, and it is still not. This process, ultimately, please reject this question, which I agree is just convoluted and, you know, just not understandable. And reject that and please prolong this to 2023. And I understand from Attorney Braun that there can be, or there should be, an RTM committee to review the charter with much more authority and scrutiny. So I think that should happen. I don't think. I know it should and want it to happen. So please, please take on your authority as the RTM and give this document much more scrutiny and allow the public to have a document that they can scrutinize properly, and which I will do and want to provide more comments. So I think I've said everything I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Israel. Anybody else up there, Prue? Are we good? Okay. Any further comments from the body? Representative Spohier? Let Representative Whackerman go first. You spoke already.
Karen Whackerman, District 7. I just, we've had some really interesting comments from the public just now, but I want to make sure folks understand that we don't have the power to change what the Board of Selectmen decided to put on the ballot. We don't have any power with that. And we also can't postpone the deadline. So all we can vote on right now is to authorize the clerk to create this explanatory text. So I don't think we can take any more public comments. It's up to...
Sorry, you can't ask questions. Seriously. You've been on the RTM before. You should know that. You can't... Okay. Public cannot ask questions. And we don't have to, and we don't have to answer them, even if you did ask a question. Representative McCormick. And you're right, it hasn't been run like this because we've never had hybrids like this, so...
Karen McCormick, District 2. I just wanted to point out to everybody here who a priority knows this and for the public who might be listening, that this process has taken a full year. And to suggest that you're going to pull together a Charter Revision Commission and have them participate for three years and participate in hundreds of meetings at that point, because I think they've met at least 30 or 40 times, is just, to me, just unrealistic. This process has been transparent from day one. The first select woman has consistently messaged to the general public in her newsletter what's going on with the charter revision process. The public was invited to participate, attend, have input. I think there's many, many people that did have input, and if the general public wanted to participate and wanted to have input in the process, there was availability for them to do that all along the way. So to suggest that this has been non-transparent and somebody's been hiding the eight ball from the public or from anybody else is just disingenuous and untrue. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCormick. Representative Pastilli.
Sharon Pastilli, District 3. Mr. Moderator, through you to Attorney Baldwin. Attorney Baldwin, is there a redline PDF version of the charter available as Ms. Israel asked for?
I'm so glad you asked that question because the redline version of the charter is on the website, and it was, it's been up there for at least a week, if not 10 days, together with a clean copy of the proposed charter, together with the regular current charter.
Thank you, Representative Pastilli. Town Attorney Baldwin. Representative Vergara.
Jill Vergara for District 7. I have to respectfully disagree with Representative McCormick. I don't think that you've read the statutory limits for this review, and maybe you're conflating the time period that we have from the time that we appoint a Charter Revision Commission and from the time that the Board of Selectmen has approved those changes. But there are two separate timelines, and that first one, actually, we have quite significant amount of time for the charter review to do its review. It's actually, if you do, if you compute it, it's 20 and a half months, and our commission only took, I think it's nine months to review, so that's significant. And on top of that, we had 16 months to work with after the Board of Selectmen approved it. So what Attorney Braun stated, that we ultimately have three years to work with generally, and that is not unusual. Other towns take that time. We really did compress it, and it's never been explained to me why. It would have made more sense to me if the Board of Selectmen had actually voted on this timeline. They never did. And it wasn't up to the attorneys to decide this for us. It wasn't up to the first select person to decide this for us. This should have been discussed openly. It was not at the Board of Selectmen, and they should have voted on this.
Okay. Any other comments from the body? Representative Spohier.
Representative Spohier, District 4. I just want to say that I agree that I think we're all going to have to agree to disagree on this as far as the timeline, as far as the transparency, as far as what occurred. Unfortunately, what's before us right now is to vote on the explanatory text. And if we were to not vote this through at this time, we would not have anything for our voters. This would continue to go on the ballot for this year, to the best of my understanding, and it would go without any explanatory text. So I think it's our job to, unfortunately, put the text on right now, pass it through, and then, as representatives, we can get out the information to the thing, to our voters, and leave it up to our voters to decide who, what is right, whether we vote yes or whether we vote no on the charter. And at that time, we can all make our decisions clear. I agree that this wasn't transparent. This wasn't the right timeframe, that there are a lot of things wrong and a lot of missed opportunities here, but unfortunately, that's not what we're voting on for today. So I think we need to approve this to get the word out to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Spohier. Representative McCormick.
Karen McCormick, District 2. Can we just ask through you, Mr. Moderator, Attorney Mednick, to weigh in on the claim that the process normally goes on as much as 20 months and that having a nine-month period for the charter review is something that's not normally done?
None of this is... None of this is, so... Going to call the question? Motion to call the question, seconded by Representative Whackerman. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Did the WebEx people get that from the RTM? No, I mean, Fred, are we saying they all voted? Did they vote? I didn't hear anybody vote on that. RTM members on WebEx, did you hear that last question and vote?
No.
Representative Georgiades called the question, and the vote is open. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye. No, no, I said aye first round, sorry. I didn't choose.
This is fun. Abstentions. Okay, I think we got everybody now, right? That was unanimous. Okay, now we're ready to vote on the item, item number six, as amended. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Okay. We heard this in committee last week. To hear and consider for the first time an ordinance creating an arts commission sponsored by Jeff Steele, District 2, Sharon Pastilli, District 3, Marcy Spohier, District 4, Hannah Gale, District 6, Jill Vergara, District 7, and Karen Whackerman, District 7. Did anybody want to make any further comments on this? Jeff, I know you weren't here last week. Anything you wanted to add? Are you... Well, we're not voting, so we're not voting on this. It's not a voting item.
I wasn't here at the committee meetings last week, but I am in support of this ordinance, and I think forming the arts commission is a good first step to potentially creating an arts district down the road. I think it is something that here in town further promotes what we're already trying to do and have been trying to do in town, which is promoting the arts, bringing in arts, whether it's music or literature or you name it. But I think this is a great thing for the town, and we've gone through the various iterations with the town attorney, and if we are able to put in an arts district, then that fantastic. But in the interim, having an arts commission is a good first step, and again, it makes sense for what we're trying to do and have done here in town. So I'm in support of it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eight. To hear, consider, for the first time, an ordinance prohibiting use of artificial turf containing rubber infill, sponsored by Cindy Param, District 2, Jeff Galdenzi, District 3, Sharon Pastilli, District 3, Laura Carson, District 4, Will Diaz, District 5, Hannah Gale, District 6, Andrew Grisaffa, District 6, Mark McTermit, District 7, Jill Vergara, District 7, Christine Brown, District 9, and Drew Georgiitis, District 9. Did we want to hear anything further there? Are we good until next month? Everybody's good till next month? Okay, great. Sorry, I had to switch hands. We got the supplemental warning that we have to go to, item number 14. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. Resolve that, actually, the Board of Selectmen approved this on the 14th, so that is already done, this past, when was the 14th? And the BOF would need to approve this tomorrow night at their special meeting. So resolve that in accordance with a recommendation from the Water Pollution Control Authority, WPCA, an appropriation of $625,000 be made from the WPCA fund balance for the cleaning of the primary digester. And I have a motion to approve. Representative Seibert, seconded by Representative Diaz. Mr. Bodie, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Did you want to give us a quick overview of this project, please?
Sure. On April 24th of this year, there was a suspected clogged discharge line that caused undue pressure on the tank's cover, causing 10 of the 12 mounting brackets to break. This money would be used to clean the contents of the digester out so we can assess the damage to the inside, repair it, and get the digester back online. We use this tank, we feed two sludge streams to it, we heat it, we mix it, and we reduce solids anywhere from 40 to 60% before we remove it from the system. Right now, we're running a little modified, so this would get us back whole and get us back running as the way we're supposed to. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bodie. Any questions from the body? Seeing none. Okay. Representative Gale, let's go. Come on. Hip, hip, up, up.
I just, it went by me really quickly when you said what caused the accident that caused eight bearings out of 10 to break, and I'm just, I was just wondering if it had anything to do with what was going on with the testing of the sewer lines, or was there a pressure coming from some source that I didn't, that I missed?
It didn't have anything to do with the inspections that were happening in the recent month or so. This happened back in April. The tank holds 600,000 gallons. It's sealed, so there's no oxygen in it. There's one way in, there's a couple of ways out, and the main line out, we suspect, plugged. We're not allowing any material out, causing overpressure in the, in the tank itself.
Okay. And is this an unusual occurrence for the main line to be completely clogged? Like, is there any investigation as to why that happened?
Well, it, there's debris that gathers in the tank over the years, and they recommend cleaning every 10 years. It hasn't been done in 20. Why, I don't know, but that's, until we get into the tank, you really can't see what happens, so that's what we're suspecting, and we may never know exactly what caused it, but it definitely needs to be cleaned out.
Okey-dokey. Thank you very much. I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gale, and welcome back to reality of an RTM meeting. Any other questions from the body? Anybody on WebEx, Prue? And I think we lost all of our public. Okay, let's take that to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Abstentions? 37-0 passes unanimous. Okay, that was the... I forgot, you can't use both hands. You have to have one free. We'll send this out. We, this is the last item. Congregation Bethel Sisterhood's 48th Annual Interfaith Suckit Luncheon on October 13th, Thursday, October 13th, we've been invited to as the RTM. I'll, I'll scan this and send it out to everybody, if you, whoever wants to attend. And I want to thank everybody for sticking in there tonight. We're a little, little long, but we have a motion to adjourn. Representative Param, seconded by Representative Gale. Good night, everybody, and see you next month.